Scheduled for six fifteen, but due to the ceremony, swearing in a chief and a deputy chief went a little long there, but that's two that definitely worth celebrating. So I will read this public notice in for the record. It says, the Board of Commissioners of the City of Mount Juliet will have a public hearing on Monday, December eleventh, two thousand and three at six fifteen at the City Hall on eyes to be considered on the following reading. In the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-two four budget ordinance, twenty twenty-three, twenty-four to appropriate funds to purchase property approximately five point five acres located at forty-three seventy Old Lemon Dirt Road map seventy parcel twenty-seven for the fire department annex and approve a plan of services for approximately twenty-two point one nine acres located at six twenty Clemens Road map seventy-two parcel seventy-one point oh six and part of seventy-one oh one and located within the city's urban growth boundary. If anyone is, if anyone would like to make a comment on either of these two items, I'd invite you to come forward to the podium. If you have any other comments or would like to speak to these, you could speak at the regular meeting as well. I see someone coming forward, so. If you have comments, we'll ask that you keep your comments to three minutes and supply your name and address for our records, please.
I'm Deborah Metters. I live at seventeen oh six Valley View Drive in here in Mount Juliet. And I live directly behind the lost property on Old Lemon Dirt Road. And I want to tell the commission that I'm very much in favor of the fire department moving in behind me. That was not my first reaction when I first heard it. I had the, you know, the knee jerk hair on fire. I'll never sleep again. Reaction, but I talked to the fire chief and he's, you know, we've had a couple of really nice conversations and I feel so much better about that. When I think about sirens in the night, after doing some soul searching, I remember the night the fire department came to my house and my house was filled up with smoke and how, when I heard the sirens coming down the road, it was such a relief to know that help was on the way. And I felt that way about the ambulances who've been to my house, the relief I hear. I know I probably aggravated some people who had to hear the sirens that were coming for me. So I don't want to be the person who says, I want you at my beck and call when I need you, but stay away from me. I can't imagine better people to have behind me than the fire department. My other big concern was the horse. And if you have not met Cozy Joe, you, you're missing one of the sweetest experiences you can have. He's been in my backyard for over thirty years. Two generations of kids on my street love that horse. And just last week, he put his head over the fence and nuzzled my grown daughter. I mean, just put his little head right in there and gave her a little hug. He's all but human. He just can't talk. But that you're preserving the rest of his life for, you know, a good quality life for him. I am a walker and I walk the green weights here. And I know the long-term plans are to have, connect that with the park down by Dairy Queen. And that just is the, I could never have wished for anything better that I could be happier about. So when you wake me up in the middle of the night and I wake up from the sirens, I have made a choice that I am going to say a prayer for the firefighters and for the people they're going to visit, and then I'm going to go back to sleep. And I already hear every single thing on Mount Juliet Road. I live that far from it. And I can see the traffic light by the bank from my back windows. So I don't have the expectation of peace and quiet. I'm used to it. And I'm going to be grateful for my new neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else wishing to address the commission on either of these two items? Okay, hearing none, we will close the public hearing. All right, we will now start our regularly scheduled meeting that was scheduled for six thirty. Today is December eleventh. I'll call this meeting of the Board of Commissioners to order. We have a quorum present pursuant to six twenty-two ten of our city code. We'll proceed with conducting the business of the city. So, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for coming to our monthly meeting of the Mount Juliet City Commission. My name is Mayor James Manis and on behalf of the commission and staff, I want to welcome you here tonight. The first item on our agenda is our setting of the agenda. Is there any objections to setting the agenda as published? Hearing none, we'll set the agenda as published. We have a, two items on unfinished business, six items on new business. If you are in need of an agenda, they are in the baskets at the back of the room, or if you're following along online, you can do so as well. The agenda is published online. So with that, it's available if you need it. So we'll move over to our pledge, invocation and pledge of allegiance. If I could, I'd like for our P I O officer, Mr. Justin Beasley, if you would, lead us in the invocation and pledge.
James Hamburg was here. Ton of pastors were here, and now I've got to pray. Isn't that funny? If y'all will stand with me. Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for all the great things that we have to celebrate in this city. Christmas upcoming, a great Christmas parade, two huge promotions within our police department. Lord, we thank you for our first responders. Please watch over them. Please guide them. Please protect them. Lord, please be with our elected body as well with the decisions upcoming tonight. We thank you for the guidance and the wisdom that you've given them. We thank you for the same for our city management as well, Lord. You have blessed us beyond measure, and for that, we give thanks. Lord, just be with us this holiday season. Comfort those in need. Be with our neighboring counties that have experienced devastation, Lord. If people feel led, Lord, please help them to surround them with comfort, to give where they can, whether that be water or blankets at the police department. Lord, we thank you that we have so much, an abundance of so much, Lord, that we can help out for those in need, Lord. May we love them like you love us. We give you the honor. We give you the praise. We give you the glory. We give you the Thanksgiving. It's in your holy and precious name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Beasley. The next item is approval of the minutes from our November twenty-seventh meeting. Is there a motion? Motion? Second, second on this? Any questions or comments on the minutes? All in favor of the minutes, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? And the minutes carry. At this point, I'll recognize our city attorney. He has prepared a statement that he was requested to read to us.
Thank you, Mayor Manis. As each of you know, there were a total of six ethics complaints filed recently. Mayor Manis and Commissioner Malley each filed a complaint against Commissioner Hefner. Commissioner Hefner filed a complaint against Mayor Manis and against Commissioner Malley. All four of those complaints and responses to the complaints, as well as supplemental information, were provided to the five members of the Mount Juliet Ethics Commission. As I noted to you in separate correspondence, as has announced at a previous Board of Commissioners meeting, and given the possible conflicts of me continuing to advise the Ethics Commission as the city attorney and ethics officer, and pursuant to section two point three five five of the city's Code of Ethics, the Ethics Commission unanimously voted and approved retention of a separate attorney to represent and advise the Ethics Commission in these matters. The commission chose Bill Farmer, a former U.S. Attorney, Chair of the Metropolitan National Civil Service Commission for over twenty-four years, and the first federally appointed public defender for the Middle District of Tennessee, who comes with a considerable amount of experience, over fifty years of law practice. As I previously noted, members of the Ethics Commission are not allowed to comment, discuss, or engage in conversations with any party about the pending complaints and its investigation, except during the commission's meetings or to request information. Similarly, commissioners of the Board of Commissioners are prohibited from any involvement in or comment on the investigation, except when requested to provide information by the Ethics Commission. Pursuant to section two point three five five, the Ethics Commission received and investigated the four complaints involving Mayor Manis, Commissioner Malley, and Commissioner Hefner. The commission investigated to determine whether any of the four commissioners had violated the Ethics Code. As city attorney, I was available to advise the commission regarding questions on any provisions of the Code of Ethics, but was not involved in the deliberations. Upon receiving the complaint against him or her, each of the above referenced commissioners prepared and provided a response to the complaint against him or her. The Ethics Commission continued its investigation. As noted last week, the Ethics Commission concluded there was not sufficient evidence to proceed on any of the four complaints, that a public hearing was not necessary or required, and the four complaints should be dismissed. With the dismissal of these four complaints, these matters and the work of the Ethics Commission regarding these four complaints is concluded. I believe each of the three commissioners involved in these complaints have issued public statements on the dismissals. I would therefore strongly urge that no further comment or discussion on these four complaints be made, and that each of these commissioners, as they have so expressed in statements, focus on the several important tasks and projects involving the city of Mount Juliet and its citizens. Also, as previously been disclosed, there are two remaining complaints involving sitting commissioners, a complaint filed by Commissioner Trevette against Commissioner Justice, and a complaint filed by Commissioner Justice against Commissioner Trevette. Those two complaints continue to be investigated, and reports on that investigation will be forthcoming in the future from the Ethics Commission. So the investigation revealed that either of these two complaints provide a reasonable cause of violation of the Ethics Code has occurred, and that one of these two commissioners has committed a violation of the Ethics Code, a public hearing shall be conducted by the Ethics Commission. Finally, I would respectfully remind all commissioners that the city manager has nothing to do with and is prohibited from involving himself in an ethics investigation. If you should have any questions on procedure, please direct those to me. If you have questions regarding any actions to be taken by the Ethics Commission, I would ask that you direct those to the attorney, Bill Farmer. And thank you for your service. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is our citizen comments. If you have any comments for the Board of, I would ask that you come forward to the podium, give your name and address for the record. I'd ask that you keep the comments to topics related to the city and not on people. If you have questions, please direct them to me, and I can either have somebody from staff answer, but under no obligations is the board to answer questions from the table, so. Yes, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Bill Robinson, fourteen hundred North Mount Juliet Road, Mount Juliet. I just wanted to mention the sign ordinance and the only, I think it's long overdue to have some amendments to it. It's some great amendments in there to it to clean it up and to make it a better ordinance. The only concern I have is a lot of the older strip centers, which we own some and other people own them, and it, and the ordinance addresses change of use. So if a, if a jewelry store was there and they, they moved out and a, a lady's apparel store moved in, then the, the change of use says that the sign can be brought to certain specifications. Well, I'd like to make sure those specifications didn't mean tear down the, a monument sign that's twenty feet high and, and be, go to an eight-foot-high monument sign and cost thousands of dollars when they could have just replaced the face on a sign. So that was my only concern. And in keeping them neat and clean and all that, I'm, I'm all for that. But I just wanted to concern about the older grandfathered in signs to be neat and clean, but just not require the signs to be replaced or replenished. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Art Giles, fifteen oh two, post Oak Point. I just wanted to let those that, that weren't there, and many of the city employees were there, and the departments were there at the Christmas Light Walk that we had last Monday. We had approximately a hundred and forty people who did that. It was our largest one ever, and it was just so great. So we appreciate the city for allowing us to sponsor that and do that, and as well as the tree lighting. It was a wonderful event. My wife and I enjoyed it as well, and the parade yesterday was too. So I'm ready for Christmas. I don't know about y'all. And also, and, and the police for doing such a great job, and it was such an honor to be here tonight to be able to see the swearing in of both of them. And I also just want to, as far as the agenda is concerned tonight, I hope that you do vote to purchase this land for this fire station coming up. So, thank you all. Merry Christmas.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else for the Board of Commissioners? Okay, seeing none, we will move to commissioner comments and reports. Recognize Commissioner Hefner for five minutes.
Thank you. First off, I appreciate everybody coming out this evening and also watching online. Thoughts and prayers go out to all of our sister cities that were affected by the recent tornado, tornadoes that took the lives of several citizens in those cities. Thoughts and prayers go out to them, their families, and those that were affected by it. We know all too well what it's like to be faced with a disaster such as, such as this. So my heart goes out to each and every one of them that are struggling right now to get through this. Wanted to thank everybody for coming out to the, to the tree lighting and the Christmas, Christmas parade. What it, you know, it's, to me, the ones that I've attended have been, I think it was the largest I've seen in terms of attendance. Certainly more kids than I've seen in the past Christmas parades that I've attended. So it was really good to see the, see the kids come out for that. Many thanks to staff for putting that on, parks, PD, fire, every, all those that, you know, put, put a valiant effort into pulling that off. It was, in my opinion, a tremendous success given the, given the rescheduling that we had to do from, from Saturday to Sunday. So big kudos goes out to everybody. And Justin, of course, riding around on his bicycle, taking video. So that was, that was fun to see him. Just glad he didn't wreck it or get injured. Want to say congratulations to Chief Mullins and Deputy Chief Tyler Chandler in their recent promotions, and we had to swear in earlier this evening. So couldn't have picked two finer gentlemen to fill those roles. So really excited about, about the city and what, when they, what they're going to bring coming here in the, in the future. So also finally, congratulations to Chief Hamburg on a very successful career that he's, he's had here with City of Mount Juliet and his new chapter in his life. So congratulations to him and good luck and best wishes to him as he enters into this new, new chapter. So it concludes our report.
Thank you, sir. We'll recognize Commissioner Malley.
Yeah. What that's like, there we go. Thoughts and prayers for the victims of the tornado. The ones that, the families who have experienced loss of life with their loved ones, and those without homes and without businesses, without property. Again, thank you. Congratulations to Chief Hamburg on his retirement, and Chief Mullins and Deputy Chief Chandler. I gotta get, get used to saying that. And again, thank you for, Art Giles, for mentioning the Christmas, the BPAC Christmas Lights Walk. That was an amazing turnout. And even the kids were just, of all ages, were just so excited, you know, going up and down the streets and looking and, and just hearing them talk amongst themselves. You could just, you know, sense their excitement. And, and also, the parade was, was exciting. It was fun. I had a little elf outfit on, and it, it was so cold. But I do think that the Parks Department made the right choice. I wouldn't have minded getting a little wet on Saturday when the temperature was warmer, but that's okay. It was cold and we did it, and it was very successful. And thank you again for everyone who left the water on the side to be collected for the, the tornado efforts. And that's all had, and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everyone.
Thank you, Commissioner. We'll recognize Commissioner Justice.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I do want to also echo sentiments of the others up here, and I'm sure everybody at this table will pretty much say the same thing. And then we, we have experienced, we know what it's like to go through a tornado, and we know what it's like to have a loss of life. It's sad. It hurts the families, obviously, of those, but it also hurts the community. It brings the community together, and I've heard those comments made even with, in Hendersonville already, where they talk about being family. And so our, our thoughts and prayers go out to them. And we want to be everything we can be, as supportive as much we can possibly be to them. We know what they're going through firsthand, so, you know, our thoughts and our prayers should go out to those guys. And it's, it's a shame. You will get through it, and you'll be talking about it three or four years from now. So as far as the tree lighting and the Christmas parade goes, Parks Department, Rocky, John, Jennifer, all of the folks, Aaron, obviously, at the Parks Department, what a wonderful job putting this together. And yes, we did move it a day back, and in spite of moving it a day back, it was one of the largest crowds, I believe, I've seen. There was more kids, it seemed like, than I saw at this one than, than I've seen in past times. And I was, it just made my heart feel good. It really did. So can't say enough about the police department, you know, the fire department, the explorers, everybody at City Hall. It's, this is, I saw Sheila out there. I'm not sure she was directing traffic or throwing something at somebody, but she was out there and working. And I was, I was, you know, you were not throwing it at me because you would have hit me. But it's, it's so much appreciated by the people that live in Mount Juliet. And, you know, it's our town. I'm wearing a pair of socks. I got a sister's whimsy called me, and they had a, and they're under twenty-five dollars in case somebody was filing an ethics complaint. But it's, they, they told me they had something for me, and I went over there and I got a pair of socks. Andy Barlow would appreciate this. I'm gonna, I don't know whether I can show these on camera or not.
Can you see that? A little more for it. I can't get any more for it.
I'll just go ahead and tell you, it says, dang, I love this town. It says dang in my book. I'm not going to cuss on the TV, but I would ask everybody, as we're going through the Christmas season here, please be sure and shop local. Get the things that you can get from the city, from inside the city limits, because that money goes back in to pay Kenny Martin and these folks for doing a good job that they continue to do. So. That being said, I wanted to congratulate James Hamburg in his retirement. I know what it's like to retire from law enforcement. That's not the easy thing to do, by the way. It's not, it's a culture, it's a lifestyle, and once you leave that culture and that lifestyle, there's a little bit of something missing. Kenny Martin can probably attest to that. It's a camaraderie when you're, you're fighting drunks for a living and your buddies are fighting with you. You worry about you going home to your family every night. The people that go through their career, make it to the end of that career, and they walk away from it, walk off into the sunset. You know, they've, they've actually accomplished something, something really good. And that being said, our new chief, Michael Mullins, and our new deputy chief, Tyler Chandler, both very good friends of mine, both very much appreciated by me and my family. And so thank you. I look forward to many years of both of you being in the positions. You're stuck with Michael Mullins now. There's nothing you can do about that either, so. Thank you for what you do for Mount Juliet and Wilson County, and for what you've been doing for so many years. And I want to thank all the police officers and firefighters and everybody in the city for the great job. And I want to tell you, thank you to all the employees. Thank you so much, Mayor.
Next up, we'll have our Vice Mayor Trevette.
Thank you, Mayor. So all for coming out tonight, and also the folks that are online. Congratulations to Chief Hamburg, Hamburg, excuse me, on his next chapter. I just tell that man can just pray over our city even more, you know, as he's freeing up a little bit of his time. And, but absolutely, he left our, our city, you know, staff, you know, just amazing. Michael Mullins, Chief Mullins and Deputy Chief Tyler Chandler. Yes, it's going to be a little hard to get that out there. The last change, I got to change all that information on my phone now. That's going to be a little challenging. But congratulations to all those men and, and also to their families. It just shows just the dedication for all the folks that did make it here tonight that got a chance to hear both, actually all three men's messages. It was just amazing to hear their story and, and all their challenges and setting goals, and then it just, it's just setting a good legacy for our city. So thank you, gentlemen. Thank you to the Parks team, the fire, the police, all the staff. I can't even imagine as we switch from one day to the next about all the changes that had to go through. I mean, of course, just setting the event and then changing it just because of the weather. And I know some folks couldn't make it, even though that those folks couldn't make it, we were still, it was amazing. We actually, for this first time, first year, we actually had enough candy until the end, which was great. So it was sad last year when, you know, you got to ride, you know, like right around that corner, past the train tracks, and then you see all those kids and you're like, and you're out. All you do is just wave. So we didn't want that to happen again this year. Yeah, yeah, I know. We had bubbles. Yes. So, but yeah, that was good. The tornado victims, man, that is close to home. Thank you to all the, well, actually, the folks that were out there reaching out, you know, just checking on different folks to see how the housing was and, you know, see what affected them. It just goes to show, you know, that we do live in the best city. You know, man, it's just hard to think about, you know, those families that are affected because I remember this time, you know, actually out there helping, you know, those families clean up their yards, clean up, you know, you know, the streets and so forth, and seeing all of our first responders and just think about what they're having to do tonight as we're sitting here in this building, having a meeting, you know, get to honor some great men. And here they are, just, just disrupted right before Christmas and those kids. So, you know, this is the time that we need to represent. And thank you to the first responders, because I heard there was some, our city sent, you know, a lot of support and supplies and so forth, and that's just what community is all about, is supporting our neighbors because they've done that for us. And it's just, it's an honor to be able to do the same thing for them. So thank you to all the department heads that helped out and getting those services over there to them. I want to thank my parents for coming down. We won't be seeing them through Christmas, but it was nice for them to come down and actually be part of the parade and sit in and just, it was really nice for them to get a firsthand experience to see how great our city is. And they were very impressed with all the staff and all of the services, and then, of course, the community. They're still talking about it. So thank you, guys, for everything you guys do each and every day for all of us. Merry Christmas. And, and as we roll into New Year's, please just, you know, be thinking about folks. You know, this is something that we all talk about, that we're all, you know, very happy. We're, you know, family oriented, but there's still some folks out there that don't have a family. So take time and, and be a good neighbor and just make sure that our neighbors are taken care of, you know, the stress, you know, there's people being laid off still. So if we're fortunate enough to have a job, if we got a business that's, you know, that's being prosperous, you know, we're all blessed to have these things, but not everybody is. So take time and, and think about your neighbors and how we can do to support them. And then obviously, the last thing is shop local. You know, it's, it's, it's how we get our services. You know, that's one thing that we can all sleep every night, knowing that our fire department, our police department is taking care of us, and, and we can lay our heads down to know that we're protected. So thank you all. Mayor, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'll just say, start off by saying congratulations to Deputy Chief Chandler and of course Chief Mullins, which is going to take me a little getting used to, to say it. So I'll be like everyone else and probably ask for your grace in advance. But I got to congratulate to our current Chief Hamburg and the way he served this community. And I think right now, what we saw tonight is just really a testament to the good job he's done because we saw two people that have just seamlessly moved into these roles, that will be running our police department going forward. And I don't think I've had anyone express the first word of concern about the direction the city will be going after the change of leadership. And that to me, that, and I've said it before, but that to me means so much that we have city officials, you know, from staff that have people in place that can take these departments over at a moment's notice and continue what we've got going in Mount Juliet, going in the right direction. So with that, Chief Hamburg, if you're listening to us, thank you for the job that you've done. And if you're watching Money Not Football, I understand that too. But thank you for the job that you've done. The tree lighting, I, wonderful, wonderful evening. Going to thank everybody that shallow Baptist for everything that they did, staff and everything that, that they did to make that possible. The parade, I know the, some people were a little disappointed about the changes with the weather. And, you know, if you looked at the weather app on Friday night, it, it seemed like a, a very logical decision to make that call. And I saw the same information everybody else has, so I'm not going to criticize the change. But I will say this, that changed, and it was a little cooler on Sunday. But here's the thing. I mean, that, that gave us an unplanned, so to say, opportunity as a community to come together and raise support for those cities. Because when those decisions were being made on when that parade was going to happen, I don't Because when those decisions were being made on when that parade was going to happen, I don't think anybody foresaw what was gonna, what was gonna fall on these cities behind us or beside us. And this really gave us an opportunity to come together for, as a city and do a lot of good things for these cities around us. And I know they're very appreciative, as Commissioner Justice and others have pointed out. We've been there and we know what that means. So we appreciate everything that, that you did as citizens to support them. And, you know, we were not far removed from them, March 3 tornadoes that hit on 2020. And I've said it before, I did, I think a good job kind of holding it together until I come around there at Valley Center where command staff was set up and saw all the support that had come from the other cities. And, and you know, it's, it's not that there was any shortage of volunteers or anything else that was going on there. But it's just from a municipal standpoint, when you looked out there across that parking lot and they'd been working all day and they just brought the trucks back there at that point. And you saw all those cities that had come in to support us. And it's just the knowledge from a municipal level that you're not alone. And, you know, we've done everything and I know Mr. Martin has been on the phone continuously reaching out to these cities. We've already sent some first responders out there for the initial, initial impact to, to respond. Public Works and the grapple trucks are being offered. They may have already left, but I think there was some coordination involved with that. But they'll be there as well to help with the cleanup on that. And just thank you, Mount Juliet, for doing what you do so well, which is when people are in need, supporting them and coming forward and stepping up. You didn't let us down in 2020 or in 2021 when the other tornado happened. And I know you won't let these other cities down either. And your heart, I mean, it's what defines us as a city here. But thinking of that, I, it really strikes home what's really important in our lives. And a lot of times that's family. And I know for many of the people surrounding us tonight, that maybe they're going to have a Christmas and their family's not going to be complete. It just really strikes home for me how important that is. And one thing I didn't, as a father, really appreciate going forward is just my daughter leaving for college and tomorrow's going to be her birthday and it's her first birthday apart. And I know for me, that's kind of a little bit more emotional than I thought. But family is so important. So we, we understand here. I mean, everybody at this table's parents, brothers and sisters as well. And we're a community of brothers and sisters that are there to support you in any way that we can. But with that, I appreciate you again, Mount Juliet, the way you've stepped up and shown out of here. So I'll conclude my remarks with this. Merry Christmas, everyone, and Happy New Year. And I'll recognize our city manager for his comments.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Thanks for everybody that's here tonight and those watching at home. We appreciate you. I want to let the commission know because I know that they stand in the hundred percent. I've spoke to many of you this weekend and all of you know where you feel. When we had the March 2020 tornado, of course, that was devastating, but we also had one a little over a year later, not quite a year. Yeah, I guess it would have been over a year later. Oddly enough, December 11th, 2021, we were struck by a tornado, for many who remember that. And we didn't, we didn't have grapple trucks on the March 2020 tornado. And thanks to the commission, past commissioners like Commissioner Giles, we asked for an emergency declaration basically for the city. And the commission enabled us to buy the grapple trucks, which you use. So we're going to be behind by about a week while we send the trucks out to these other communities. And because the most important thing is, of course, now that they've, all the victims are at hospital and, and other things. And you know that people are safe for the most part, it's starting to clear the roads, clear property so that they can get power back on. They still have a lot of people without power. So I've spoken to all the officials on behalf of our elected body here, offered any and all assistance. I think the fire team said they're taking all the water up tomorrow to Sumner County that we were able to collect as a result of the parade. So thank you all for helping us get the word out on that. The grapple trucks are in Hensfield, spoke to Mayor Clary with Hensfield. He wanted me to say thank you to each of you for helping them. As you manage, they got quite a mess. We've lived through it, so we understand it. Thanks to all our emergency service workers for what you're doing. And in particular, those that volunteer emergency services. We have quite a few police officers that you can't tell one from the other because there's no difference, except for one gets a check and one doesn't. And I had the honor of attending, as many of you did, the banquet recently the police department had. It did my heart good to see all the wonderful people, employees getting recognized, most deserving and watching their family members as they got recognized. That's, that's tremendous. So thank you for inviting me to that. That was a lot of fun. I think we got a recipient right over there and I can't remember who all else, so I apologize. But just awesome that when people donate their time because they love this city so much. Many of you had said shop local. Thank you to people like Mr. Robinson and his family and others that have invested in our community, because that's where it comes from. Thanks for shopping local. You realize that all these resources that we've got now that we're blessed with, that people like Commissioner Justice may recall years ago, we didn't have. I mean, we've always gotten by and it's nice to be so blessed now that you've got some things that you can send to others. Thank you to Sheila and Ms. Jennifer, Ms. Belinda for decorating the room for such an awesome occasion tonight. I told Tyler, who I like to just call him by his name, but it's real easy. Once you make chief, it's easy, just call them all chief. James chief, Michael chief and Tyler, and it's easy. And I don't even add the deputies, just say chief. And so I got a head start, I started calling that a few weeks ago through notes, because I, I can only imagine how it feels. And it did our hearts good night to see these young men get recognized. So thank you to the commission, because I know you were in full support as well. We're just extremely blessed. And I guess I'll leave with this is that we do know what it feels like. And it is horrendous to think that people have lost loved ones. There's other folks that were injured, there's people that have their houses and homes, a lot of them had already done Christmas shopping. So anybody out there listening, if you can continue, if you have additional donations, whatever, either through gift cards or whatever else, that's what we did the last time. If you want to bring those by the city hall or the Parks Department during normal business hours, we'll make sure those get to these organizations like Mount Juliet for Hope. Everyone's Wilson, without all these wonderful volunteer organizations, we wouldn't be the city that we are in. I encourage everybody just to truly realize with all the negativity going on in the world, just true to how blessed we are. It's hard, life is hard, life is tough, but we are so very, very blessed. I know that everybody here is thankful for that and I don't think we can say that enough. So thank you, thank you for everybody again that's here tonight. The B-PAC event in particular, I'd like to give a shout out to Mr. Giles and Commissioner Merleley. It was the largest one that we've had. It's a lot of fun when you go by. And oddly enough, a few of the families that participated in that walk were victims of the tornado that we had in December 11th of 2021. And they were commenting about how thankful they were that they're now back in houses that have been repaired, that were totally destroyed during the tornado. So it just does your heart good. And so I'm thankful for that and God bless each of you for, on this elected body, for giving us a tool so we can go out and service the citizens the way that they deserve with nothing but elite service. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. You left off one thing I was expecting, and that is you can't have the Christmas story without a census. But with that, we will conclude the comments and we will move into the business portion of our agenda, which is, we'll start with 9A. An ordinance to annex into the corporate boundaries of the city of Mount Juliet, approximately 22.19 acres. Property known as the city of Mount Juliet property located at 620 Clemmons Road, map 72 parcel 71.06 and part of 7102. And located within the city's urban growth boundary. Have a motion, second. Any questions, comments or discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? 9A carries a unanimous vote. The next item is 9B, an ordinance to amend the fiscal year 2023, 2024, budget ordinance 2023, 2024, to appropriate funds for the purchase of the property located at 4370 Old Lebanon Dirt Road, map 77 parcel 27, being approximately 1.3 acres, which that is 5.5 acres is the property size from Cynthia D. Law for the fire department. Motion and a second. Items on the table, any questions or comments? Commissioner Justice, you're recognized.
Is this a typo? The 1.3 needs to be 5.5, I think. Is that correct?
On the agenda.
Make sure everybody knows.
It, it was corrected on the ordinance, the heading on the agenda was not corrected.
Okay. We, I received an email, I think Commissioner Hefner, I think it was, and I apologize. I believe it was Commissioner Hefner said that there was somebody that was wanting to bring a, a PUD in and had offered some land along with that PUD that would be free. And it was in a general direction or a general area, but I don't know if, has that been picked up? And has anybody talked to anybody about that? I don't have any idea.
But the, the PUD in question? City manager?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And each, in everybody's package, there should be a map. Hopefully you've seen it. And then for transparency, the developer did reach out to me, I believe it was last week, and I did communicate with the developer and thanked them on behalf of the city for their generosity and for being most kind. And I do want, I wanted it before you so that you could consider it in addition to the other. Now, of course, the chief's here, and I think this is a great opportunity for the city and by no means am I turning it down. That would not be up to me, that'd be up to this elected body. My only concern with waiting is that this could be a year or two down the road and then we miss out on the opportunity for the property we've got. But with the commission's blessings, the chief can speak to which site he feels like might work best for the city. But it is, this, this information is in your package, so, because I wanted you guys to have it in front of you. If you chose to defer, if you wanted to consider it further or whatever, we'll support whatever the commission feels is best.
Do you have any questions?
Well, I'm, I think what we need to do is look at the possibility that we can consider. You know, if they come in with, with this plan, you know, there are certain pieces of, for instance, our ISO code, I think, chief, and we're at three right now, right? And that has to do with how many miles it is to a fire department and a fire hydrant, things of that nature, right?
Actually, it's, it's changed a little bit over the last few years, probably about 10 years ago. I so went into a different model instead of measuring from having each property be within 1.5 miles of a fire station and a ladder truck within 2.5. It's based on a deployment analysis. And so it's the speed in which you get to the calls. And so what I've always liked to do is place our fire stations within about two and a half miles of every property that we can potentially and try to get to about an 80 to 90% saturation with that. That ensures that our response times meet those requirements for ISO to be as low as we possibly can. And that's one of the reasons that we're wanting to move this station down toward Old Lebanon Dirt Road in that area is to enhance the response times and enhance our coverage areas to the western part of Old Lebanon Dirt Road and some of the subdivisions that are underserved on that side.
Okay, is it within two and a half to three miles of Cobblestone Landing, the, the location you're talking about now?
Well, actually it would pull back from a lot of those subdivisions out on the west side of Old Lebanon Dirt Road. Some of those subdivisions would be drawn back because it's about, it's over, it's about 0.62 miles from the Old Lebanon Dirt Road property that is under consideration tonight, back to this proposed PUD. And, and that is significant when you're talking about the area on Old Lebanon Dirt Road out to the west side.
So you, a half miles, what you're saying, 0.62, approximately a half mile. So I guess my, what I'm trying to determine here is that two and a half minutes, is that what you said, two and a half minutes response time, approximate?
It'd probably be a minute and a half or so on, on that type of, on 0.62 miles, maybe that range. But it takes a lot of those properties outside of our two and a half mile coverage to that west side. I mean, it'll increase it by about a minute and a half to two minutes, probably being a half mile, because we'll have to traverse through that intersection at North Mount Juliet Road.
Okay. I mean, I'm, I'm just trying to determine the, the amount of risk versus the amount of reward in paying $950,000 versus zero dollars. That's a, that's a big gap, so we, we're going to have to ponder that.
And our concern with the other property on Old Lebanon Dirt Road is one, road improvements. There, that road is not, is very, we would have to traverse that road every day if we built a fire station there. And currently it is not, it is not improved and, and it is very narrow for a fire truck to go down. And a lot of potholes on that road because it's county road. The property in question is still in the county and will have to be annexed. The property would have to be closed on, because I don't even think the property owners, according to the email they sent back to Mr. Martin, own the property fully yet. They're waiting on approval through the process. And from what I understand, this property has only gone through basically the pre-process. It's not even, it's not gone through tech review, it's not gone to the planning commission or anything like that at all. And so our concern is the delay and, and then road improvements and all the other infrastructure improvements with that property. Additionally, if the road is improved in front of the property, the, the parcel that they're offering, the two acres will be probably not deep enough to put a fire station on. It's not going to be deep enough, even if we face the base toward the street for us to do drive-through bays onto the street there at Old Lebanon Dirt Road. And so that's another concern of ours is the depth of the property. It's long and narrow, but it's not very deep.
So this hasn't been to the planning commission yet for approval? How was the one we're considering tonight, has or has not?
Ours is contingent, it's going to the planning commission on December the 21st.
For the first time? Has it been to the planning commission?
It only goes once.
It only goes once.
Why don't we do this, the, the property in question? We've got our, our city planner here, she may, she can kind of enlighten us on where they are in the planning process. And if, if, because we literally know if you're gonna, if you've even considered giving it a positive approval or going through that before it goes to the planning commission to get a recommendation. So I'm just kind of curious what the timeline, where they're at and on this, if you've gotten anything.
Actually, at this point in the development process, I have not received anything from this development. I have met with them previously, along with Commissioner Hefner, and this has been going on for months. We have not seen any action from them. They are trying to utilize this donation as a way to curtail our commercial mixed use regulations because they do not have the capability of developing commercially themselves. So they are using these, this acreage as part of that, to meet those requirements.
Okay. Thank you. So nothing really formally started at this point?
No, sir. No submission.
And it's probably hard to comment on. Thank you though for filling us in.
I have one more question, if I may. So why are we considering five acres when we only need a couple?
Because that's the, that's the property that was available in question. I mean, the, the added property, we talked to the owner about purchasing part of the property instead of the entire piece of property. And they did not want to sell part, they wanted to sell all of the property that they own as the five and a half acres. So I, Mr. Lee, Parks and Parks Director, has gone out to the site with us and, and that, that parcel is very usable for park property, green space, greenway trails, et cetera, that could even potentially tie down into the park.
Commissioner Hefner?
Thank you. You know, when I first heard about this, it was the last BOC meeting. I, you know, I had some concerns, you know, anytime we're talking about moving fire stations and ambulances versus adding, there is a, there's a positive and a negative effect, right?
Yes, sir.
We're moving closer and this impacts a big chunk of my district, District Three. So as we move further south, we're moving away from, further away from Oak Hall. We're moving further away from my neighborhood and the people that, you know, live around here. So we're moving further away. But the positive is we're moving closer to Kelsey Glen. So that's a positive. Clearview Estates. And got to thinking about that and then it dawned on me, well, we have a fire station on Clemmons Road, right? WEMA.
Yes.
That all city, anybody that lives in the city pays property taxes, county property taxes, which funds that fire station. So it kind of alleviated my concern about lack of responses or slow response times to places like Jackson Hills, which would also be impacted by the move of this fire station. But we have WEMA that's on Clemmons Road. So I wanted to ask where we're, where we're at with regards to mutual aid and how that works? Because that could help me, you know, and decide, because the money thing's the money thing. But I'm, I'm more, first and foremost, more concerned about the impact that it's going to have on the citizens. So can, can you shed a little light on where we're at with mutual aid and what we're, how that would potentially work?
Yes, sir. In our current configuration, anytime that we are out of ambulances, that we don't have an ambulance to respond in the city, WEMA covers us. And then anytime that WEMA is out of ambulances in their zones here, near the city, they'll request us and, and we will respond to those areas immediately. Kind of the same thing for fire protection. If we need them to respond, we request them, we can do that immediately. There is no automatic aid per se to where they're responding on initial alarm, but they are responding to us and we are responding to them at any time requested. And a good example is the Glass Creek Apartment fires. WEMA was there, Lebanon was there, they responded to that incident for us at request. And the same would be true if we had a fire in one of our subdivisions or one of our areas that are there now. But that is upon request for that mutual aid request. Or dispatch knows that if we're out of ambulances, that they have to contact them directly.
So we, I thought we had an, an automatic mutual So we, I thought we had an, an automatic mutual aid?
We did not have an automatic aid agreement with them.
Okay. Um, do you have any concerns about that?
Uh, no. I'm, I'm open to the idea of an automatic aid agreement. It would require this board of commissioners to approve that automatic aid agreement as well as the county commission for WEMA to enter that automatic aid agreement with us. That's the, pretty much the state law requirements are those, the governing bodies have to approve those aid agreements to go in place if they're automatic in nature. State law covers us to provide mutual aid at any time, but the automatic aids require an, an actual agreement, and we would have to sit down with them and work on response plans and et cetera.
I, i- is there a downside to an automatic mutual aid? What's, what's the downside, if any?
Uh, I mean, the downside is you're using your resources from the city to respond, you know, into unincorporated areas of the county. But at the same time, you know, you're, you're utilizing potential county resources if they're needed inside the city. You know, it's, there's, there's goods and bads to it. The big thing that you have to do is make sure that, you know, it, it is mutual. It's what you're getting, you know, that we're making sure that we, you know, we're getting resources at an equal amount, that they would be getting resources from us per se.
But can you, can you set up restrictions in far, in terms of how far out from a, one of our stations that we would extend out to?
Yeah, we can, we can set up any restrictions that you would say on where we would respond.
Within so many miles or something. We're not going to go all the way out to, you know, you know, 20 miles away or?
Yeah, the board of commissioners could, could tell us what, what our parameters are going to be, and that's what we would use to formulate the response plans.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Pass, Mayor Schmidt.
Yep. Thank you, Mayor. First of all, thank you, Ms. Hamlin, for enlightening me on that, uh, on that direction. I'm not real fan with any developer trying to pull one over on citizens at the end of the day. So my question goes back over, yeah, I know. So my question goes back over to the chief. Is this the best plan? You know, you are the subject matter expert, so you're the one protecting our city. Is this the best plan that's been presented to you and that you see right now for the, uh, for our citizens?
Yes. I, I believe in doing, you know, like I said, the two and a half mile polygon radiuses by streets. And, and when I was, began to look at the stations, because Mr. Martin asked me shortly after I started to work here about, you know, where we would locate a new station three and getting to work on finding property and doing those things about getting the station in order. Near Old Lebanon Dirt Road was the logical place, mapping wise to put that. Our, uh, right now, we have a little bit of overlap in our zones with Station Two on the north side, which is much less busy than Station One on the south side of the city. And so this would actually push our zones, any of that overlap would go down toward the interstate, toward Providence, toward Walmart, Lowe's, all that area where we're really busy. Uh, and, and the volume in that area is much greater than it is north. And so Station Two, having that in place and being able to open that this past spring allows us the opportunity to move that station south somewhat because it gives us better coverage north, and so we can move this station south, which will also give us better coverage west on, on that side of the city. And then I anticipate future needs for station being primarily on the east side. Golden Bear Parkway, probably in the Rutland area, somewhere near there by looking at the maps, and then out basically Lebanon Road, Bender's Ferry, um, and Golden Bear Parkway, somewhere in that area would be another logical place to put a station in the future to cover that east side of the city. Because that's where we've got the most urban growth boundary. That's where we've got the most development coming in is on that side and everything else. So it's, that's the most logical place.
Okay. And, and just to be clear, there was an adjacent property that was in the flood zone that needed a bridge, and that was, uh, because I know there was a question about, do we really need this amount of acreage? How many acres was that lot next to it?
Uh, 7.7, I think. 7.7, 7.8, something like that.
It was in the flood zone, and it only could be used for a certain amount of acreage, right?
Yeah, I think it was 4.6 acres out of the 7.8 could have been used for actual building. The rest of it was in a flood zone and would have required a bridge to come across the creek because this current bridge that is on that property is not sustainable for our trucks.
And this one right here will, will handle that and any potential future growth that's needed by the city?
Yes. It's out of the flood zone. Uh, the property is out of the flood zone. The driveway's out of the flood zone. One small area of the property down on the very corner, probably a quarter of an acre out of the five and a half is in a flood, the flood zone. It's right down near the creek.
Sure.
But the rest of the property is out of flood zone.
Okay. Thank you for all this information and you guys pulling your team together on trying to, uh, obviously work with the landowner. So thank you. I'm in support of this tonight. Thank you.
Commissioner Mulletti.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, can you talk about the appraisal that came in?
Yes. Uh, as, as per request, we had the property appraised, or Mr. Martin had the property appraised, and the appraisal was $1 million, I believe, for the property. That's what the appraisal came back in at.
So do you have those, did you happen to bring those maps for the?
Yeah, I've got them available on the screen there. It's actually a web map. I mean, I can show the maps on the screen if you would like for me to.
Okay. If anybody else would be interested, it's fine. I met with chief and deputy chief today in their office, and, um, he explained the maps to me, and the districts that they would cover. Yeah, here we go. Um.
Yeah, this is, this is actually the current configuration based on the two and a half mile polygons. And so this is the, the three stations, of course. The blue is Station Two to the north. More of the red or crimson color is, um, Station One to the south, and, and in the middle, the, the brownish-orange is, is current Station Three, exactly where it sits behind this building here on Hill Avenue, on Hill Street. Um, and wherever, if you'll go to the new, or kind of go to the new location and take off the, the current Station Three. And this is the new coverage area of where it would cover. And you can see the, how much farther out we're going out, uh, Old Lebanon Dirt Road toward the west and how we're covering those subdivisions to that side. River, do you care to bring back up the current Station Three and where it'll overlay over both? And so you can kind of see that area where we gained that coverage out to the west side. And as I mentioned earlier, we anticipate the newer stations, the first, uh, of the newer stations happening to the east side of the city along Golden Bear Parkway. Uh, probably the first one to the south, uh, and then the, the other one to the north, um, because that's where the development is happening to the south.
Yeah, for, so for me, I mean, I was very satisfied with it. It covers Kelsey Glen on the west. And then they also talked about the, you know, in the future, where they would like to have a station. To me, it seems like a well-laid-out plan. So I was very satisfied. I, I also want to, um, I read a lot of comments on social media because I like to know what people think, whatever the subject is. So a lot of comments I read is about the city gets a blame, the blame for a lot of things. Uh, one is development, and they just don't seem to acknowledge that property owners have rights. When, if they decide to sell and sell to a developer, um, that's their right. So, um, I hear a lot of complaints about green space. There's not going to be any green space left. So in this particular situation, we have a property owner that does not want to develop. She wants it preserved, and she's very satisfied with, um, selling to the city for the fire station. And, um, and also that the horse in the back can live out his days, doesn't have to move. And, um, and there's also space to create, add to the greenway, uh, because I'm also on BPAC. We can, we can do greenway and just, I think there's, uh, you know, potential for whatever Rocky might want to do there, you know, that can be discussed. So I just think this is a perfect opportunity to preserve this little bit of land in the, in the city. And chief and deputy chief, I feel are satisfied with this property. And I, I think what I got out of what they're saying, that they feel like this is the best decision. So I'm, I'm satisfied with that, uh, and I'm going to support it.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. I'll just, uh, I'll say, I'm, I don't know, my, my focus has been getting something better for what we've had back here. And, you know, there's been a lot of discussions about selling the property back here and, as well. So this is obviously a prerequisite to, to doing that. For me, I mean, it, it, the, the property with the PUD, sounds like it was, got potential, but at the same time, it's just, I don't even think we've started down that road. I don't want to wind up in a position where I'm bent over a barrel to approve a PUD, or else I have no place for a fire station. So I'm, I'm ready to vote if you guys are. All in favor of nine B, please signify by saying aye. Okay. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Uh, that carries. The next item on the agenda is an ordinance to amend Part B of the Unified Development Code of the City of Mount Juliet, Tennessee, known as the Zoning Regulation Ordinance 2001-29, adopted October 8, 2001, as amending Article 11. Signs. Motion? And a second, the item is on the table. Uh, Commissioner Justice is asking for the floor.
Yes, sir.
Can we discuss grandfathered items, how that works? Uh, the last time we were assured that we spent $25,000 in getting a, and you might be the only one who remembers this, Mayor, uh, we had assigned ordinance, and we had, we, we paid a, a law firm $25,000 to, uh, to make it constitutional. And I think we were sued and lost within one year of actually getting that. And this is not, you know, this didn't have anything to do with you. It was, it was somebody outside of, that's another conversation, but, uh, but I think you remember this. Uh, and we had a, a candidate that he was running for office and went out and and recruited people to sue the city of Mount Juliet at that point. Uh, I want to make sure that's not a recurring nightmare. Is that, this going to, I, I know anybody can sue anybody. I get that.
It's just to look at that.
Yeah.
We sent him the precise language from that case and the resolution and the order, and that's what's incorporated.
Is that the only thing that's incorporated? I'm asking the mayor so he can ask whoever, but.
Let's, Ms. Johnson be our expert. Come up here. I, I know, uh, Commissioner Justice has got some questions, and maybe others around the table do as well, so might just have to get comfortable.
Grab a stool.
Barely see me now.
The, the question I'm asking, for instance, I know we've got some issues with one of the local check cashing places that they've got stuff splattered all over the windows. We've tried to do something about that, and I was told it was grandfathered, and there wasn't anything we could do about it. Is that going to continue to be the case, or are we going to be able to enforce that particular part of the ordinance now?
Particular part of the ordinance, once this changes, um, they will have to come into conformity. Um, there was a question, just kind of to sidebar on it, about, um, some of the issues with, uh, change of occupancy, change of ownership. There is a certain provision that, uh, Mr. Michaels and the team looked at, um, and discussed and said, there is a, um, issue with a 30-month discontinuance that's required in order that a business would not lose vested rights, including their signage. So such as Mr. Robinson said, if they had a monument sign that was there, if they did have a change of occupancy or a change of ownership, that sign would have 30 months vested rights in order to maintain that. So, um, we did take that out. We originally had that in there, that if there was a change of occupancy, that we could bring them into conformity. But due to some, uh, legal ramifications, we did remove that.
So that also fell within, it's the same case law, I would assume, that applies to car lots. The used car lots that we've got in the north section of town, they have to be out of business for 30 months. I thought it was actually 18 months at one time. Did that change, Mr. Marketti?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Um, the thing with it, like the check cashing, where you're talking about all the signs that they have within their, you know, within the business, the window signage and everything. Now, when they do change, um, ownership on that, we will have the new provisions with the signs that where it says it's 15%. That will change. That will allow us to, to make sure that they're within the, the confines of the ordinance, that they'll have to meet within the new ordinance. It's just things such as the monuments. It's kind of a little hard to explain. Mr. Marketti may have a little bit better verbiage on it, but, um, there are certain things that we can enforce with this. It's just some things like the monument sign. We can't make them go out there and dig it up. The window signage, once that business leaves, they take their window signs with them. The new business that comes in, we can enforce the new ordinance at hand, if that makes sense to you.
It's been vetted for constitutionality. We're not going to wind up with another lunatic out here trying to.
Oh, I would hope we don't. I would never say never.
Okay.
Yeah, lunatic-free. Lunatic-free.
So we're lunatic-free. Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Johnson? Uh, Ms. Mulletti.
Is that addressed what Mr. Robinson brought up?
Excuse me. Uh, yes, ma'am, it does. It does. We, um, we had a sidebar before I came up here about that, that, um, it, with a change of use and change of occupancy, that, that provision has been removed. So if there is an existing monument sign there, or excuse me, it'd be more like a tenant pole, some, sign one of these very large ones. They wouldn't have to tear it down if they had a new tenant go in. They would just, we would ask that they maintain that sign, um, and keep it free of, you know, rust, chips, painting, routine maintenance and everything. But they can reface those signage without having to bring it into conformity with the new ordinance, which would require a monument sign.
Okay. And the other thing had to do with temporary events.
Yes, ma'am.
And banners.
Yes, ma'am.
I did talk to one business owner up on Lebanon Road. Um, her business is very dependent on, like, a special, you know, for a temporary event. And she gets a lot of traffic from the banners, uh, you know, the, the vinyl banners. So this is very concerning for her. So what, um, and as well as, and she said, as well as other business owners, um, who, she meant, I don't know who they are, but she mentioned that there's some other business owners that this has really been their worst year. Their sales are really down. So they're very concerned. Um, the banners help bring in business, bottom line.
We, um, with taking away some things, we all also do offer up some additional options. The banners have been a very big point of contention from a safety perspective. We have a continual problem, and, um, thankfully, we have the backing of the city manager, but our codes department, our city beautiful department, is constantly having to go out and pick up these banners. People will put them out, and they want them out there for business, but there are quite a few that do not maintain those. They'll, they'll droop, they'll sway, sometimes they'll get into the roadways. We have had them get into the roadways and lane of travel, and therefore you get into a safety issue because we certainly don't want a wreck coming from a banner. I wish people would take more pride in them and maintain them to a better, um, clarity. But we have offered up a few other signs now that they might could do, like the sandwich board signs. We think it actually is a better alternative because it is a portable sign. It's something they can put out. They can change on a daily basis as long as they follow the permit process. And it's also something that can be taken up every evening, every evening at the close of business. And you don't have this big bulky banner out there for days on end that's not being maintained. So it's not only safety, but aesthetics as well.
All right. And as far as temporary events for the city, uh, because I know we use banners. Is the city still going to be allowed to use?
No, no, ma'am.
No?
Uh, we were going to go to basically a similar sign of what you see real estate agents use. There's a little bit larger one. And they, uh, I can't think of the name of the material that you can pop in and out. You can change your messaging. So in the future, the owner owns that frame, and as things change, sales, things of that nature, they can pop that, the sign face out and pop the new one in. And we've got examples here at City Hall that we use for rezones and things of that nature. We used to use banners, oddly enough, even back in the day for that. It just didn't work well because they're only as good as maintenance and how they're put up. And then, of course, some of the utility companies have had worries about the ones that are getting put up by some of the individuals. They're driving these big, I guess you call them farm fence post stakes, tight things into the right of way. And they were, and not calling, uh, A-11, not calling the, I think that's what it's called, A-11 or something like that, utility company. So that's why we came up with this. We reached out to some, to some different cities that had encountered this as well. Banners are extremely popular, you're exactly right with that. We're just looking for a safer and a more aesthetically pleasing, but yet one that still gives the businesses the opportunity to promote whatever they may have, just like what we do here. We can take a, Ms. Jill can take a simple rezone sign and use it a week later for a special event. Or just like the sandwich board sign we've got here, these are what we're, that we're using. Where in the old days, if you look around town, you'll see some of our census signs around town that we didn't use these types of signs. We want that old-fashioned sign, you just stick it around. And they're, they're twisting and blowing and, and turning it over or getting pitched over into the ditches. So we're just looking for something a little safer and a little more appealing to the eye. And actually, something probably in the end will probably be, uh, more beneficial to the business. I understand the concern on the front end of we're losing these banners.
I understand the concern on the front end of we're losing these banners. If you notice in recent years, the banners were so bad being put up on the poles that we actually started allowing businesses to put banners on the buildings. I think Quarter Pub. Still has a banner on the building that they actually affixed to the side of the building, which is a much better option than the ones on the stakes. So that's that's how we got here, but I do understand the concerns of the businesses that have asked and I've received some of those calls and. Talked to the chamber director, but I think if they give this a chance. And let us switch to the new option, it'll be one that's more beneficial in the future and we can always revisit if for whatever reason you. New opportunities and technology come about.
Well, and this one business owner didn't really feel like most of the business owners in the city are aware of this. So. Between first and second reading, I'm going to support it for first reading, but between first and second reading, I do want to reach out to some more businesses to get their input. And I do want to thank you, thank y'all for printing the samples of the different signs because I really didn't know that much about signs. So I can see what it is you're talking about. And then the, what was it, one or other, oh, and just so people know, this has nothing to do with the yard sale signs, garage sale signs. That's the same as it always was. That's not changing. And the other thing was political signs during elections. Because I know banners are used.
Anything that that's one I'll probably have to reference to Mr. Marketti. Because there is a different type of provision set forth for political signs. They're governed quite differently. Under TCA and so forth, and we follow through with the state law. So that's something I'll reference to Mr. Marketti if you don't.
I cannot recall what that law says currently, but we will comply with whatever that states. Political signs have special category. Because it's a political speech and that has probably the highest protection of any First Amendment rights.
And special state law.
I don't recall it being withdrawn that banners were removed from that, but again, we will, we'll look into that TCA specific.
Okay, because if an elected official has already invested in like banners and they reuse them each time.
I do believe it would be protected, but I do want to verify that and I'll. Get with Mr. Marketti and his legal team, verify for sure before second reading.
Okay, that's all my questions.
All right. I will say thank you for spending the time with me today to go over a lot of this. Miss Johnson was gracious enough to agree to. Go on a tour and look at some live examples. So if you're out there and you have concerns, please email me your concerns. Before the new year, because after that, I've got a lot of vacation time to burn that I have. Time we can go out and look at these and this is referring to the day job, not the city thing, but it frees me up some time to go look at a lot of these. So. If you've got concerns, this will be back second reading. I believe we will skip the first meeting in January, be back January twenty second, I believe, for second reading. So if you've got concerns, you've got quite a bit of time here to be reaching out to someone and let them know about this. Between first and second reading. I I may have misspoke. It's lucky.
Since we will not meet the second meeting of December, which is Christmas Day.
That will count.
That will count. So we can have second read in January eighth.
So to explain my error, we do have a meeting scheduled in December. We do have a normally have a second meeting in December, but since that follows on Christmas. We will not be meeting, so that will count as the skip meeting and we will meet, hear this on second reading on January eighth. Mr. Martin.
Mayor, just as an alternative, and I take full responsibility because I'm the one that's probably been the. The most passionate, I guess, about the banners and I do want the businesses to be able to use every. Device possible to promote their businesses. We definitely believe in that. If for whatever reason. The will of the body and us working with staff and the chamber and other businesses. It's if it's ultimately decided that banners can remain and we're open to that idea, maybe we could write language in the ordinance that says. That any unmaintained banners will be immediately taken down. If they're not maintained or or kept taunt because a lot of the ones you see there are, they're twisted. There was one that we got that was on Lebanon Road by one of the car washes, I think, that was so old, it was actually disintegrating. And it's, we actually took it down in the post. I think they'd forgotten that it was even there any longer and that's what you hate seeing in your community because. You know, when you see things like that, you people tend to emulate, well, that's okay. They got one. It's the broken window theory. And so there, you know, we're open to suggestions. We're open to maybe even the business community would be more supportive of that saying, let us keep banners. And for those that aren't maintaining them, a little bit stronger ordinance allows staff to say, well, it's evident, take a picture of it, document it for the record and. And remove it. Those, that would help us a lot because a lot of times what happens is staff spends so much time. And we get it, managers are focused on the internal workings of a store. They're not so worried about the banner, but oddly enough, they wanted it up. Is that the businesses that are. Following the rules and want to have a good banner are allowed to do so, but for those that aren't, we have. Actionable item that we can use to go, so we're taking it down and here's why. Because some of them do put them up. I hate to say shoddy would be the word for it, but some are even worse than that. They're. Tasting them to city light poles, to middle Tennessee electric light poles, to natural gas meters. As you see, these big metering systems around Old Lebanon Dirt Road is a perfect example recently. We just want it done right. So we're willing to be flexible if that's what the body decides. But we might need just a little stronger. Ability from the city staff size to address the ones that aren't being taken care of.
Yeah, that was the comment she had made is. If there are those business owners that are being responsible with their banners and they maintain them. She was concerned that they're penalized because of others that do not maintain theirs.
Portable solution, that's what we do. Maybe some staff is look if there's an option that would work.
Vice Mayor.
Just a quick question, just so I can, because there's a little bit of discussion here. So with these banners, obviously if we have a new business coming up. And they obviously cannot order their sign correctly at the right time, they got to put a banner up. Does that, does that change anything for them to put a temporary banner up until their sign's properly installed? Does that change anything?
Yes, sir. If we, if it passes within the ordinance as written, they would not be able to utilize a banner. They could utilize other types of. Temporary signage like Mr. Martin mentioned, it's a corrugated plastic. That type of signage would be available to them. Just about as easily as a banner. I mean, I understand completely. I've spoken with a lot of business owners. Understand their concerns and that's one reason we had rewritten the ordinance the way we had. To try and provide additional options to them, not necessarily just for temporary, but also for permanent. Because we want to give them as much marketing potential as possible because when they're successful, we as a city are successful. So that's why we want to give them some additional options on temporary signage. It's just we expend so much city resources for the ones that are not responsible. And I just really don't want to go down the path of. If we allow the banners. We're still going to have the ones that are going to be, I'll put it up and then the city will take it down. And there's, there's no no teeth there for us to do other than be in a cleanup service for them. And then you do have the responsible ones and I greatly appreciate those. Because those are the ones that we write these ordinances for, the people that follow the rules and that care truly about the aesthetics of this city. Those are the people we truly appreciate and it's trying to find that middle ground there and it's extremely difficult. It's extremely difficult, but we want to do the best we can for both the city and the businesses.
Okay, so. I'm going to go back to the same thing I said to the fire chief. You're the SME, the subject matter expert in signs, obviously. You've done your research, you know what's out there, you know what's best for us. And and obviously the last thing we want to do is go out there and have City Beautiful go out there and clean up somebody else's trash or somebody else's mess. And by no means do I want to 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 slow down or 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 water down somebody's advertisement. Obviously, there's stuff out there for them to be able to capture. And it isn't a timely manner if they order it correctly, just like these banners. So it sounds like. You know, that that you are coming to us with a plan of action and you're supporting this. So I appreciate you going through all of this. I don't want to water this down. Obviously, if we do, then we just, all of your hard work and dedication, just basically. You know, you know, here we are up here as a board changing direction based off of, you know, one offs, right? So it sounds like you've done your due diligence and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions and comments before we vote on first reading? All in favor of the ordinance as submitted on first reading, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The ordinance carries on first reading. The next item is eleven B, an ordinance to rezone the property known as three thirty. West Division Street, map seventy two L, group C parcel two from OPS to CTC. Have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on the rezone? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Eleven B carries eleven three and ordinance to amend the fiscal year twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four budget ordinance twenty twenty three, twenty four to accept. Grant funds for the Golden Bear and Volunteer Boulevard Traffic Signal Project. Have a motion, second. Any questions and comments on this? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Eleven C carries on first reading. We'll now move to the new business consent agenda. We have three items on the consent agenda, a resolution adopting a plan of services for the property known as the City of Mount Juliet. Property located at six twenty Clemens Road, map seventy two parcel seventy one point oh six and part of seventy one. Point zero one in Wilson County, Tennessee, located within the city's urban growth boundary. The second item is a resolution to approve the attached services agreement with Geo Services for the construction materials testing for the Mount Juliet Police Department and authorize the city manager to sign the agreement. And the third item is a resolution approving agreement between the City of Mount Juliet, Tennessee. And the Tennessee Department of Transportation for the Cedar Creek Greenway Phase Two project and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement. Motion and a second. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda? Commissioner Malley?
On the. Six twenty Clemens, just so people know, this is the plan of services for. This particular piece that we earlier annexed. This does not mean that we have a plan. You know, plan of services, it sounds like you have a plan, but it just means that it's entitled to, you know, police, fire. Public works and that kind of thing that any other. In the city.
It's a requirement by state law to issue this statement.
So I just want to make sure people knew that.
All in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Consent agenda carries. Next item on the agenda is adjournment. Any. Any objections to adjournment? Hearing none, we are adjourned.